Good evening. I'm First Luck Woman Eden Winbimer. I'm joined by Selectman Steve Hall and Selectperson Amanda Thompson comes on Zoom. And we call this regular Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 6:32 PM. The date's June 25th. All right, public comment? Anyone online with public comment? Here. All right, move along to correspondence. We heard from Duncan. Oops, one sec. We heard from Duncan, the Duncan which is in the center right here on 187 and Route 20. They're actually, they did a big remodel of the interior and they're having an open house. We let Economic Development, Michelle, let Economic Development know and they've invited the Board of Selectmen, whoever wants to go for a ribbon cutting. It's Friday, June 27th, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. If anyone from town would like to go too, there's a DJ, a photo booth, a chance to win a big TV and other raffle prizes. And then next correspondence is from the Farmington Valley Health District. After 13 years, the Director of the Farmington Valley Health Department, Jennifer Kurtanas, she is retiring and she's had a 40-year career in public health, but she's our person that we, she's our go-to person. She will be replaced for now. The Acting Director is now currently the Assistant Director of Health and her name is Stephanie Johnson and they are, will begin a recruitment process for a new Director of Health, for a permanent one shortly. So we're covered. But just by an acting one who we also know. All right, minutes from the May 14th and June 23rd Board of Selectmen meetings. I just need a motion to second them.
I'll make a motion to accept the Monday, June 23rd minutes and the Wednesday, May 14th minutes as presented.
Eden, I'm gonna let you second that because I was not at the May 14th meeting.
Okay. If you've read them, you can still vote, but I don't know if you had a chance to read them or not. But I'll second it. All those in favor, second. Any discussion? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is old business. Back Office Shared Services are tabled for now. And next, 5B is the solar on the landfill update. We did present our project for the NRES grant program and it was not, for the award, it was not accepted this time around, so we are going to be entering into the August round of awards. So our liaison at Titan Energy through CCM explained, he sent an email to Amanda and I, explained it probably happened because there was a big RFP that the state put out for this round and it probably crowded up a lot of projects. So he thinks we'll be in okay shape to try again in August. Our attorney, our environmental attorney who we hired, did have a chance to review the contract that we would have with Green Skies and the town and we're just waiting on Green Skies feedback from that. It's Green Skies contract that our town, that, excuse me, our environmental attorney reviewed, made his changes and then we're waiting to hear back from Green Skies. So we'll be ready to go forward if we do hopefully win the August round. I know we're in the August round. So that's that for now. Sewer update. So today we had Simsbury come out, MDC came out and East Gramby Town Attorney, Excuse Me, Town Engineer and Public Works replaced fully the meter in Meter Pit 5. It's all set, it's installed, it's up and running. Next week, Simsbury WPCA, Water Pollution Control Authority, who helped us install it today, will come out when we have more Public Works staff here and show them how to download the meter reading app to their phone so that we'll have weekly, we'll be able to gather weekly data. The town, the attorney who is representing us with MDC is going to reach out again to MDC. We haven't heard it back from them yet. We've tried several times. But I think once we have this meter going and accurate readings and MDC witnessed us installing it, hopefully they'll begin to negotiate so we don't have to wait until October as they had wanted us to. So, which is great news. So that brings us to new business, appointments and resignations. We have Wild and Scenic here and I received a letter from Mike Crayman who's here and Paula Seig. Tell me, is that right?
Stop.
Okay.
Like song.
Correct me. Okay, okay, perfect. I got it now. And they would like to be appointed to the Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook Wild and Scenic Committee. So we can go through all of them or let's do, let's do one organization at a time.
Okay.
So if I could have a motion to please reappoint.
So we'll have a motion to reappoint Mike and Paula to the Wild and Scenic.
I'll second that. All right, all those in favor say aye.
And the fan roared, right?
Yeah.
And then I'll make another motion to reappoint Paula and Mike to the East Gramby.
No, it's the same thing. It's the same thing. Yeah, sorry. I don't, I don't know what I, it's the same thing.
To Wild and Scenic.
Yeah. It's the same thing.
Okay, or was it to Lower Farmington Valley?
I don't know why I, it's short, it's a short version for that. Sorry.
Okay, so we're gonna reappoint you guys to the Lower Farmington River Wild and Scenic.
Yes.
Very good.
And as Chairman, Chairperson again too? Okay, so Mike is Chairperson if you wanna edit it. All those in favor?
I'll second that.
Okay. I thought you had seconded it, sorry. Okay, thank you. You're reappointed. Thank you so much.
Cheers.
And Mike and Paula are gonna be giving us an update shortly too. So then moving on to our next appointment is Park and Rec. Alexa Bednarz would like to join as a student representative as Chloe Repose is graduating. So if we have a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the nomination of Alexa Bednarz to the Park and Recreation Student Position.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Alexa. Building Committee. I received a request from Superintendent to resurrect the building committee, which we had already for roof. And I did reach out to the members and ask who'd like to stay on it. A couple don't wanna be on it any longer. They're involved in other projects right now. So the four people we'd like to appoint to the new, newly formed building committee are Bob Braven Seager, Jim Hayden, Tim Butler and Mike Malloy. So if I could have a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bob Braven Seager, Jim Hayden, Tim Butler and Mike Malloy to the newly formed building committee for the school.
The roof committee.
The roof committee.
Yep.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So this is, just to clarify, it's a segment of the roof that was part of the 2001 high school renovation. It was not redone as a part of the last roof project at the middle school, high school. So that's what they'll be involved in, doing an RFP. All right, and then we do have one more appointment for, it's a reappointment for our Animal Control Officer, Ryan Selig. His term expired, expires on June 30th this year, so it would be for another year until June 30th, 2026. That was a late addition today.
I'll make a motion to reappoint ACO Ryan Selig to the position of ACO, Assistant ACO for the town.
Oh, full.
Second that.
Oh, he is full ACO.
He's full ACO.
Okay. An ACO for the town.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right. You guys are up. Thank you. It's easier for the recording.
I'll make this very brief. We did bring copies of our annual report from 2023, so I'd recommend that you take that and look through it at your leisure. We're almost finished with the 2024 annual report and we'll hopefully get that to you probably in a month or two after we get it printed. If you flip through here, you'll see all the different activities that we have worked on through the year. They're very similar activities for 2024 and for 2025. If you look at the very beginning of the report, it explains what the, our Wild and Scenic Reserve River designation is. We're federally designated, the lower part of the Farmington River and the Salmon Brook and we're the one town out of the nine that are part of the partnership organizations that has both the Farmington River and the Salmon Brook in it. So pretty important.
Okay.
And I've been the town appointed representative to it and Paula is the alternate and she attends most of our meetings. We meet on a number of subcommittees and our regular full committee typically once a month for each of those. We do a lot of water quality monitoring. If you look in here, you can't tell much about the river unless you know how it's behaving and where the good parts are and where the bad parts are. So we try to encourage doing the water monitoring. Most of that is done by the Farmington River Water Set Association. But there are other many different projects that we'll work on, you know, helping with the hemlock will be adelged control, trying to save some of the trees along the river. If you look on page 10 of this particular one, you know, there was a grant to the East Gramby Middle School for Fish Release. So we have contribute to the school raising trout and salmon and then they go out to the Grand Brook Park and get educated on the river and how measured, you can measure the quality of the water and they do the fish release into the, into the Salmon Brook. They've been doing it for a number of years, so you typically see this East Gramby Middle School Fish Release showing up in all the annual reports. That's, other things that we've been working on, we've had a number of kiosks installed over the last few years. We currently have kiosk standing in Two and Avon, one at Tillotson Road near Fisher Meadows and one at Alsop Meadows. And then we have one up in Hartland. And this year, we're putting ones in in Simsbury by the Pinchell Sycamore and in Granby at the Salmon Brook Park. So I think Paula had prepared a little thing just to illustrate to you, then she provided it to you to show you what the kiosk looked like. Because at some point, I think we'd like to pursue having one in East Gramby. We also do get involved with activities that might impact the river. You talked about the, you know, the one solar project at the landfill. Of course, there's the big solar project and battery projects going on over on the Granby Monrovia Nursery. And I just wanted to let you know that we've had interactions with Desri on that. We had talked to him last fall, provided a number of questions and comments driven by having attended, some of us having attended the Granby Open House, so we had some idea what the project was about. So we put up together a list, our committee put together a list of questions. Desri answered a lot of them and then we had a meeting with them, a Zoom meeting. They recorded the meetings minutes for the Zoom meeting. We had additional follow-on questions for them and that's kinda where we ended up last year and then nothing happened until just before this, the East Gramby Open House. We nudged them about the other comments that we had and they provided some responses. There's still a lot of open issues, but I didn't want you to know that we are going through that process. And you know, it's focused on potential impacts on the rivers. You know, they wanna drill underneath the Salmon Brook.
Right.
And you know, where's the path gonna be? We're interested in that. What kind of impacts could there be on the Salmon Brook from the drilling process? And we're looking at the nursery as well. When it was formerly agricultural, we didn't have much we can say about it, but now it's gonna be commercial, they're held to much more strict water runoff issues. So we're interested in that, trying to pay attention, what are they doing to make sure that there's good control of what's happening with the water? Are they using any water from the Salmon Brook? I mean, the nursery had a big pumping, got a lot of the water, the Salmon Brook, and that's not gonna happen anymore.
Gotcha.
And we're interested in what kind of plantings they would do to see, you know, what can, how that might influence runoff. And they've been very receptive to our questions so far. Of course, they've still got a bunch of work to do, but I didn't want you, make sure you knew that we were doing that and that.
Thank you.
That's, anything else you wanna add? Paula, on what we're doing. There are other things, we've came up, the Upper River has a quilt project. We finished up a quilt project for the Lower River, so now there is a large 40-foot-long quilt made up of 27 panels for the Lower River and the Salmon Brook and we'll probably look for places that we can put that in, maybe the library or if there's someplace here you'd like to do it at the town center, someplace.
Okay. So who makes that? Who made that or just volunteers?
The woman that, Mary Pat Ledger, who was kinda coordinated making the Upper River quilt, agreed to do the Lower River quilt as well. So she goes out and finds people that are interested in doing these panels. So there were 27 different quilters who are interested in coming up with these things and they each do their own panel. There are specifications on where the river's flowing into the panel, where it's flowing out, so they all have to match up, so they all are connected. The Salmon Brook caused some problems because it's off to the side, so we have, the Salmon Brook will be on top, both the east and west branch, and then they come together and link into the Lower Farmington River. And it's pretty impressive. There are some pretty great quilters that were part of the project.
So we handmade map, so to speak.
Yes.
Very cool. That's neat.
It's fantastic way to let people know about the river and just see some great artistry at the same time.
Very cool.
Where is it right now? I can remember.
It isn't anywhere. It opened up in a show up in Winchester, Connecticut. There's going to be a show at Kingswood Oxford in September. There's another one in August, but I'm not sure where that is. But we're looking around, trying to find places that accommodate it. You know, it's big.
Yeah.
It's long, 40 feet long. You need about five or six feet because of the Salmon Brook and the Farmington. But we'll hopefully get it in East Gramby someplace. All right, so I'd encourage you to look through the annual report if you have any questions or comments or anything that we can do to help.
Yeah, I was thinking, because I had talked to Paula about the kiosk a couple weeks ago. I don't know if it's a project, maybe an Eagle Scout project, if the town works together with Eagle Scout. I know they do make kiosks. I don't know if it's something I've thought about or.
Well, I'll.
Wish to do something different.
I'll say something about the kiosks, I guess, you know.
Yeah, and do you have like an idea of cost or size?
Yes, we, we're trying to go with kind of a standard kiosk. The actual panels are five feet wide and four feet tall.
Okay.
It has panels on the front and back and what we would really want to do is put our panel on the front and you know, it depends on how you arrange it. And that front panel basically has a map on it that shows the Lower Farmington River and the Salmon Brook and you know, you are here, indicator on it. And it explains Wild and Scenic and what our driving interests are in the river. We have five things that we call ORVs, Outstanding Resource Values. So our management plan that we had to submit to the government directs us on how we should interface in trying to protect and enhance the river and it's guided by those five ORVs. And the five ORVs are water quality, biological diversity, recreation, cultural landscape, which kinda means, you know, what happened in the river in the past, anywhere from the indigenous folks down to more current, you know, something like the Spoonville factory on the river or something like that would be of interest. And the last one is geology, which is kind of a funny one, but there is a very dramatic differences in the geology along the Farmington River. There's just a lot of different characteristics along the river from like the trap rock ridges that form the Terriffle Gorge to the flat plains in Windsor and how Farmington itself was modified by glacial impediments in Farmington that caused the river to turn and head back north and then head south again, you know, in Simsbury and Terriffle. So you know, we're looking for things that are related to those five ORVs for the backside of the panel.
Gotcha.
Now, you know, we try to work with the towns wherever we're putting it on the backsides so that, you know, you can get what you want on there too, what you think is important. And usually, usually they're paid for by us.
Okay.
By the federal government.
I didn't know how they normally do.
Costs like seven, eight thousand dollars.
Gotcha.
So we've kinda got a standard design. The Two and Avon weren't made to the standard design, but we were trying to get our foot in the door and Avon was pretty particular about what they wanted. But you know, all the rest of them are the standard kinda design. We're trying to be consistent with the Upper River, so we have a connection with what the Upper River, Wild and Scenic is as well. If you look at the examples that Paula gave you, you get an idea of what the things look like.
Yep.
We are a little worried because we're not sure what kind of money we're gonna have next year. Our money comes from the federal government, the National Park Service, so they're probably gonna get hit pretty hard and we just don't know what's gonna happen to us.
The idea of the Eagle Scout project, I think, is something valid that you should look into because they are, they look for projects. It looks for things like that and that's definitely something that's got value to it, so.
Yeah.
The wood part, the roofing, we could probably do.
Yep.
So there is a kiosk in Grand Brook Park that I saw today. It's only got one side. Maybe we could have the other side because it's on the Salmon Brook, so it'd be nice to have. And it might not be like build the whole kiosk, just build out a cabinet, glass cabinet for the Wild and Scenic information of the Salmon Brook.
In addition to a new, a different kiosk?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
For sure.
You're like, we still want our kiosk. Yeah, no, but for more information. Yeah, that's only a one-sided one. I'm not sure where that, who built that one, but I see they're all like the same standard and size and all that stuff, so.
And we try to coordinate things with our graphic designer to get, you know, consistent presentation compared to like things in the annual report. So it's a little bit of a process, but it'd be great if we could get something going in East Gramby.
I like how you did that. Very clever. This could be you. All right, awesome, thank you.
It should be.
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask if, if people want to see the report, I guess, Eden, a question for you, will we have that on the town website so people can access it or should they go to the like Farmington Valley Wild and Scenic if they wanna see the report?
We have the table in the hallway down across from the Clerk's office where we have the budget book and other things, other things like this that people can look at, so.
We can certainly get you more of them if you want.
Sure, that would be great.
Out there.
Do you guys have a link to it for yourself?
Yes, it's on.
We can.
Youtube site is lowerfarmingtonriver.org.
Okay, I'll have that put on the website.
Get the annual.
And this is on that, correct?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yep, thank you.
Easy access.
Lowerfarmingtonriver.org. Okay, I'll have that put on the website. Perfect.
Any other comments or questions?
I think I'm good. I'll put this for you, Amanda, so you can grab it.
Thank you.
Yep. Awesome, thank you. Thanks for coming.
You want to say it?
You don't have to, it's fine. I put you at the top, so you know.
We're not like you.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Hot enough, it's a good place to be.
I guess we'll have to go and get, we've been reappointed, but we had to come into the office.
Yeah, yep, to get sworn in.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is police stats for the month of May. There were 17 motor vehicle accidents, 13 alarms, one disturbance call, three domestic incidents, 30 medical assists, eight suspicious incidents, 54 traffic stops, 573 patrol checks and a total of 791 calls for service. That will be posted on the town website also. All right, next we have the tax collector report. The overall collection rate for the month of May or through the month of May was 99.1%, which is amazing, compared to last year at 98.72% same time. June's our final month of the fiscal year, then we start all over again beginning of July. And this month also, we built first sewer, which brought in almost $200,000. And just to note, the tax bills will be mailed out on June 30th and the bills are also available online beginning July 1st. Taxes. If I could please have a motion to accept.
I will make a motion to accept the tax report as presented.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. And then we just have two refunds, tax refunds. One is for Ian Holdings LLC. It's a DBA of enterprise rent of car, one Financial Plaza in Hartford for $371.19. And the next one is USA Mechanical and Energy Services LLC, 15D International Drive in East Gramby for $623.12. For a total of $994.31, if I could please have a motion for those.
Make a motion to accept the tax returns as presented.
Second that.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, those tax refunds are approved. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda is America 250. So America 250, for those of you not familiar, is the United States is celebrating its 250th birthday in 2026 and the East Gramby's formed a committee to help celebrate with different types of festivities. And there's an organization called Connecticut Humanities. They are sponsored by the state. They were given a grant to help towns, to help advertise for towns, to help organize the towns. Every town is asked to form a committee and have their type of celebration, whether it's reenactments or historical tours type of things. And they were given money to help the towns, but the towns weren't given any money. So what they're doing is helping the towns, they're offering a, or supporting a Give 250 Connecticut, it's called. So it's a sponsorship time. They're allowing us to raise funds from July 1st to July 11th. We have a page made for donations from businesses, residents, whoever wants to give, to help support the functions that the town is planning to do next year. All of our functions are going to be in 2026. Some towns are starting in July of this year, but we're just planning on next year. So this will be posted on the town website probably tomorrow and we're only allowed to do, they're letting us, the town can collect money after July 11th, but this is the push that they're doing, July 1st to July 11th. And out of 169 towns, we're only town 20 that's even like participating in this because it was a lot of work. It was a lot of paperwork and just developing the webpage for it and things. So hopefully we'll get a lot of advertisement from America, from Connecticut Humanities, America 250, to help us, just they'll be pushing it on social media and hopefully the news stations to look in your local town to see if you can donate. So in order to do that, we have to sign an agreement allowing the town to collect money. So we could name an organization, a nonprofit, to collect the money or the municipality itself can collect the money and hold on to it. So we have a separate fund for it already. It's going to be set up just to monitor the money, credits and debits. And we have an agreement, it's a draft agreement, so I'm not gonna be signing this one. We're waiting for the state to send an actual agreement, but it's basically just saying that we can collect the money and hold on to it for, only to be spent for our festivities that we're planning in 2026. to be spent for our festivities that we're planning in 2026. So these guys have a copy of the agreement, and I'm happy to share it with anyone who's willing to see it. You can just reach out to the office. So if you had a chance to read it and would like to make a motion, and so the monies can start, there's like different levels, two dollar amounts, and we'll be advertising to businesses to, to hopefully get some money and to help us do some cool stuff.
Do you want to make a motion to enter into an agreement with CT Humanities pertaining to America 250? Is that legal?
Second that. Thank you.
Make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye, any discussions?
No, it pretty seems pretty straightforward.
Okay, all right, just they want to make sure we're not doing anything dubious with our funds that we're collecting and they're sponsoring. Okay, so motion carries, thank you. So that'll get signed once we have, it gets signed by me and the executive director. Once we have the final copy and it's not a draft, they just. All right, next on the agenda is a resolution for the Department of Emergency Services and Homeland Security Grant. You're familiar with this. So we did fill out a ton of paperwork when we applied for the grant a couple years ago. And this is just a, an amendment to a resolution, just to update it. It basically states that, I'll read it because it's not too long. I, Christine Gallagher, the town clerk of the town of East Granby, hereby certifies the following is a true and correct copy of a resolution adopted by the Board of Selectmen at its duly called and held meeting on June 25th, at which a forum was presented, was present and acting throughout, and the resolution has not been modified, rescinded, or revoked, and is at present in full force. The Board of Selectmen may enter into and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security any and all documents which it seems, deems to be necessary and are appropriate for the resolved. Even with former, for Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen is authorized and directly to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and to do and perform all acts and things which she deems to be necessary, appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. So it's basically applying for a grant, accepting the grant, and we don't have to go to town meeting, they're accepting it just from, from the board. And we do have a resolution like this, it's just updating the date.
Eden, like what is the reason for it? It's just the wording of it with authorizing you to give information to Homeland Security is odd.
Yeah, I think it's because, I think it's because the, so Kenny is the one who gets these grants, our Fire Marshal, Emergency Services. And I think they wanted a resolution, like an amendment done, just because the leadership of towns changes every couple of years, and they wanted to make sure that it was like the newest person signing it. And just some, it's just some things that we get with the grant are, we don't always see this with a lot of them. I don't know if it's because it's a recurring grant, I'm not really sure why they're having us amend it other than.
The commonly known name, no name of this grant is called the Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG. It allows the state to funnel federal funds from Homeland Security through the state and to the municipalities, because I guess the federal government can't give it directly to the towns.
Gotcha.
It also supports the Capital Regional Council of Governments, which allows us access to the regional accident reconstruction teams, the regional SWAT teams, basically. All of the regional assets that we have available to us come kind of through and are funded by this Emergency Management Performance Grant. It comes up, the CROG does a lot of work with this grant, and it, like I said, it provides a whole bunch of different services, it funds a lot of the things. There, I think if you go on to the VMS site, you can get the actual breakdown, but each town is a lot of a specific number of dollars per capita.
15,000, I think we were.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's a lot of per capita.
We had never applied before until a couple of years ago, so.
Basically what it comes down to is it's the state giving us money to do things for emergency management on an annual basis, as long as we tell them what we're spending it on. And it can be a portion of the emergency manager's salary, it can be a portion of items spent for emergency management, PPE, equipment, all kinds of things. As long as it's, as long as you document that it's going towards things for emergency preparedness, it's pretty much accepted.
Yeah, things like incident management training, hazardous material training, shelter supplies. And I believe that's what, those are the things that.
There's, like I said, there's, it's a very broad and general grant that allows municipalities to use that money for things associated with.
Is there a reason why they, like, they just updated it or, because you've been the.
It's just updated.
For four years.
Yeah, they made every town update it.
And is it, it's just because they want like an ease on checks and balances? Or, I mean, I assume you have to apply, like anything that you want to spend, you have to approve through them anyway, and it's just so that we don't have to vote on it in a Board of Selectmen meeting? That's, I just am not totally understanding the purpose of it.
They don't, they don't ask to have every purchase document, not documented, but approved by the state. It is, it is a lump of money that's given to this, the state from the federal government, and then the state in turn allocates it out per capita to the towns. They will audit the town eventually regarding what we're using the money for. But like I said, it can be something as offsetting the cost of having an emergency manager, all of the things that Eden said, PPE. And there's towns like Glastonbury and Enfield that get involved with it because they have, they have members on the CREST team and, which is Capital Region Emergency Services Team, and the Regional Crash Investigation Team. So these, these things are, it's money that's needed to do, to provide necessary services for smaller municipalities like us that do not necessarily have the capital to afford to have their own, you know, specific crash accident investigation team. So it just alleviates some of the pressure on the towns to have these functions that are, that would be, it would be cost prohibitive in some cases. So it's just, it's like, it's, it's, you know, it's your dad lending you money to go to the movies, is what it comes down to. It's something that you would really like to have access to, but you normally wouldn't be able to afford it. And that's what these, these grants are for.
Well, many of our grants, we do have to go to town meeting to approve also. This one is just easing the process, so it's just Board of Selectmen. And it gets, Christine will notarize it, and, okay, it's just, it's just a quicker process. There's a lot of paperwork that goes along with it, but they're only making the towns who's filled out the paperwork already properly and had a resolution already, just do this resolution.
Okay, so like any money you use, they audit that as far as, I just, I just from like a checks and balances, so.
Yeah, so every.
Like when we're, when we're signing it and saying, we're fine with you making the decisions as the Board of Selectmen and not, you know, that we won't be voting on or it won't be going to the town or anything like that, that there is a check.
Yes, so it's like any grant, we have a separate fund for it. And our treasurer and our assistant treasurer track every dollar that's spent and where it goes, and they have to put it under what grant it's from too. So it's not coming out of the general fund. It's going to be its own account, or not bank account, but own fund. So it will be, every, every expenditure will be tracked and not go over, obviously, the amount that we get, so. Yep. All right, so I'm, I'm going to motion, yeah.
Oh, then I'll make a motion to participate in the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division Emergency Management, Homeland Security Grant application.
I'll second that, and thank you for answering all my questions.
Of course. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. I'll make sure Ken's even, I know he's on it, applying, I don't know when it's, one of the applications due, but. Okay, and so the next two items I'm actually tabling for tonight because I was going over them with our town clerk and, so our town clerk is the one who handles all ordinances and any changes to ordinances. We have a company called General Code who updates our ordinance book, as the town doesn't have a charter, as we know. So we were talking and she asked the, we asked the planning department whether they had gone to town attorney for review and they hadn't, so she doesn't, because once we accept it, she sends it to General Code, but it has to have an attorney review before it even comes to us, which I wasn't aware of. So I'll table it until it's been sent to our town attorney for review. And once he reviews it and comes back with any questions, I know Amanda had a few questions too, so we'll get those all squared away. And then once it goes through review, then I'll be able to share the changes and the ordinances. I'm not sure if, was, did you see the changes to, you all voted on it?
Yeah, did we all did vote on it?
So we can probably, if someone wants to see them, I don't know, I'm going to check first if we can share it or not, or if it has to go through the attorney first. Either way, at our next meeting, we'll have them ready to, ready to go. And then they would go before the Board of Selectmen and then go to a town meeting for a vote, so that's the process.
I mean, if we can post it for the community to see, like after the attorney looks at it, so people can review it before the Board of Selectmen in case they have questions about it.
Oh, yeah, sure.
A lot of information.
Yep, yeah, we'll share it before Board of Selectmen and then obviously before the town meeting.
Okay.
Share for review. All right, that brings us to public comment. Public comment.
Eden, it's just a question.
Sure.
Do you have a.
Yeah, those are the two better.
Do you have a committee of townspeople looking on 250 year anniversary?
Yes, yes. We were looking, we have about five people. I did share it at some meetings. If you're willing, if you'd like to join, you're welcome to on the, if you go on the website, once that's posted, it does invite people that they want to join. We had kind of said, I mean, I was part of the 150th Planning Committee 15 or 16 years ago, and it got to be like a lot of people, but we're still open for more people now. It got to be a lot. And then we basically took volunteers after that. Once we decided what we were going to be doing for the celebration, then we, then we had committees formed for each thing. But it's a, it's an actual proper group with, we appointed people at the last meeting and are taking minutes and things now, so. But yeah, we're, we think we'd be happy to take more people on now.
They're meeting separately from the Board of Select.
Correct. Yeah. Yep, there's, I think, five of us on it, four of us on it right now, and then we have a couple interested people, because we're probably going to do like a float parade. And a couple, New Gate Prison is putting on a big, a big thing. They got a grant for a, for a reenactment, so they're going to be doing that. So we'll, and then the Historical Society is involved too, so members of those organizations are part of the committee. And, yeah, so we'll definitely be looking for help.
So you'll be putting that online for your plans on there?
Yeah, it's been online and it's been in Talk Turkey, but I'll probably mention it again in Talk Turkey just to rally some more interest. And it's info@egtownhall if you'd like to inquire now, even questions. I'm just going to make sure there's nothing on, no one online, so. All right, with that, may I have a motion to adjourn at 7:50 PM?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Have a good rest of your trip.